Good evening. I'd like to call the Windsor Board of Education regular meeting of Tuesday, March 19th to order. Please stand for the pledge and then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Next order of business is a very exciting one. We'd love when we can recognize our students in Windsor Public Schools. And so at this point, I'll turn it over to you're going to do it for me. Okay. You can rise to a motion. First, I'll recognize Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to amend item two A on our agenda this evening to recognize, to add to the recognition Windsor High School Girls Basketball Team, Windsor High School Boys Basketball Team, and Windsor High School Wrestling Team, as well as what we already have Windsor High School State Champions Indoor Track Teams.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention, motion carries nine zero zero. Now I'll turn it over to Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just for the public, I was the one that made the change here. And thank you, Board, for voting it in. Every year, it seems like it's become the norm, almost like it's part of our regular agenda in March to congratulate our track teams. But this has been an exceptional year in Windsor with our athletic teams. And I wanted all of the teams and the athletes who have garnered recognitions and championships this season to be recognized in front of the community. So I'm going to have our athletic director go over to the table with the microphone, Mr. Chris Fulton, and he is going to read off the recognitions in each team and the names of the members of those teams. And they're going to come through and they will stop here and then we will take a picture and they will keep it moving. So shouldn't take long, but this is a feel good selfishly for me. So I'm happy about that. Mr. Fulton?
Mic check, mic check. Okay, good. You hear it? All right, all right. Thank you so much for having us again. We're extremely proud of our young men and women. We've had a great season along, rubbed the board with all of our sports. We've seen improvements in a lot of different things, a lot of different areas. So I appreciate Dr. Hill and the Board recognizing the young men and women tonight. So we'll get through this very, very quickly. The first team we're going to announce, they should be at the door. Yeah, they should be at the door. Somebody, are they at the door yet? Okay. Girls Basketball. I am ready. So I want to introduce our Windsor High School Girls Basketball Team, 2024 CCC Girls Basketball Champions with coaches. Yes, sir. Coached by Brittany Huggins and Alyssa Reeves, along with Nick Newman. We have Aleah Bailey. We have Chloe Taylor. We have Tyler Welsh, Michaela Williams, and Coach Brittany Huggins. We do have Ayanna Franks, who was our Connecticut Gatorade Girls Basketball Player of the Year. So she's in the All-Star Game tonight. So they're going to run out here to make sure they can, can support her. I just want to say that it's a big feat coming from a public school to win that award. Most, most boys or girls who win this feat are from the prep schools. So for Ayanna to win the Gatorade Girls Basketball Player of the Year is a huge feat. So we are, I think it's the first one in Windsor history, yes? Yeah, so we have not had a Gatorade Boys or Girls Player, right? So that's huge. So congratulations.
Mr. Parker?
Oh, you need me to jump up and do that?
Yes, sir. It's a point of privilege.
All right, is everyone ready?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
I'll be there seven thirty. I got, I'm in a board meeting right now. Seven thirty. I'll call your mother, one or two, all right? I gotta go. All right, next, Boys Basketball. So next, we're going to introduce our Windsor High School 2024 CIAC Division Two Boys Basketball Champions and CCC Boys Basketball Champions coached by Ken Smith, Keon Smith, and Gerald Joseph, along with Edward Mack and Greg Joseph. We, as you can see, we had a really great season. Trifecta, right? If you want a regular season, conference, and then state. So as they start coming in, as normally is.
And East Catholic twice.
And East Catholic twice, yes. Well, East Catholic and Northwest Catholic, which was, is huge. You know, that we were able to also beat the schools of choice. So. Ain't even five of them, I don't want to take this long. All right, so we're ready for the Boys Basketball. CIAC Division Two Boys Basketball Championships coached by Coach Smith.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
These are large human beings, boy.
Congratulations. Congratulations. You're welcome.
Congratulations.
You've done this before.
Hey, you teach these boys their old school Detroit Christian basketball. No layup, I like it. All right, no defense.
Listen, we should have worn our heels.
I know, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, I'm ready on three. One, two. Congratulations.
I think that's number five, right, Coach? Number five. That's big.
He's done that before.
That's big. So our next group, I'm really proud of this, these young men and women. I'm not sure if there's any young ladies in here tonight, but our wrestling team, the 2024 CCC East All-Conference Players. Obviously, when I first got here, we had seven kids in the program. We didn't have over 35. So we're going to bring in Coaches Vernon Kennedy and James McCumber with our Windsor High School Wrestling Team. Guys, don't walk in. Shake hands.
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
It's Dylan Frisco, Kendrick Fuller, Senia Johnson, Ryan Levine, Jacob Ly, Alexander Mercurius, Devonte Ryans, Christian Sewell, and Jackson Yang. I saw Jackson.
All right, on three.
Taylor's boy.
Yeah. Girls. You want that? So our next group will be our Girls Class L State Championship Team. Coached by Coach Calvin Karras, that's over, Nicole Donzella, Lorenzo Millich, and Mickey Dunn. So we're going to bring them in with Riley Adams, Malia Alabre, Camilla. Yep. Kaia Brown, Hannah Donzella, Kayla Elder, Michaela Evans, Shanae Green, Grayson Harris, Leila Harris, Shia Height, Adia Hill, Erica Khan, Casey Kapralis, Olivia Lawrence, Kareema McKenzie, Jada Murray, Aubrey Lynn Norris, Sanaya Penns, Destiny Ross Bates, Evelyn Schwartz, Amari Whack Walker, Jordan Williams, Paige Wilson, Zariah Williams, Tamari Gillespie, and Alicia Smith. They got to turn sideways. Okay.
Where are the shortest ones here?
Yes, she is.
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Was that Hannah? Was that, yeah, we saw her, yeah, sorry. That was Hannah.
Hannah was, yeah, who was at the Capitol.
Okay, our last group is our Boys. So the Windsor High Inside Indoor Track Team was chosen by the Connecticut High School Association of Connecticut as the 2324 Boys Indoor Track Team of the Year and will be presented with the plaque at the, at the Coaches Association Indoor Track and Field All-State Banquet tomorrow night. Maxim Copeland has been chosen Connecticut Indoor Track Male Athlete of the Year and is also presented with a plaque on Wednesday night. Congratulations to all track athletes, Tayshaun Berry, Maxim Copeland, Jordan Crane, and Hunter Howard on earning MSIR Indoor Track and Field Hookah Male Athletes of the Week. Yeah, I can get in this one, it's not as many.
Oh, it's still here on the, Ayanna, come down here, it's shorter.
Come before the Coach Karras here, he's really short.
Congratulations.
We sat, we sat, we were at the Capitol and we, yeah, we met Hannah, we met her daughter. Congratulations. Yeah, yeah, it was cute. She was great. Okay, sir. It's full. Congratulations. Hey. Thank you. Congratulations.
Both of our babies, both of our babies are cats. Congratulations, Kim.
So I'd like to.
Wow. That is good.
I'd like to thank 80 Fulton again and again congratulate, congratulate all of our teams, the athletes, student athletes, excuse me, the coaches, the parents for their support and all the hard work. Windsor is definitely one of those schools that we're making a mark across the state and with the track team across the country. So I'm very proud and I always want to give recognition to the hard work that people put out.
Thank you. Hard act to follow. This point in time is on the agenda is our audience to visitor. And Ms. Daly, can you take it from here?
Good evening. This is Robin Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If anyone from the public would like to address the Board, you may do so in two ways. You may either type your name, address, and comment into the Q and A feature in the Zoom application or you may speak, or you may speak by clicking raise hand or dialing star nine on the Zoom app. When you are called on to speak, you will be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own. No comments will be made by the Board at this time.
Thank you. And for people in the audience, at the two and a half minute mark, if someone is speaking, Ms. Taylor will raise a red card briefly and then at the three minute mark, she'll raise it and hold it up. And at that point, please try to wind down your remarks. For those who might be on Zoom or phoning in at the three minute mark, if you're not able to see the red card, Ms. Taylor will interrupt you and say to finish up your remarks. At this point in time, is there anybody in the boardroom who'd like to address the Board? Anybody in the boardroom like to address the Board? Seeing none, anyone online?
There are no attendees with their hands raised.
Okay, without objection, like to close audience to visitor. Audience to visitors closed. The next item is the consent agenda. And are there any items here before we read the script that need to be pulled? Any items to be pulled? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Board of Education approved consent agenda items for A, financial report, for B, enrollment report, for C, food service report, and for D, human resources report.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos on the consent agenda. Seeing that there was nothing pulled, I assume there's no objection or questions, discussion. So at this point, I'll have a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention, motion carries eight zero zero. Next item, approval of minutes.
Move the Board of Education approve the minutes of February 21st, 2024 regular meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention, motion carries nine zero zero. Next item is Student Representative Report.
Thank you. So I would like to start off that Windsor High School had an SEL Day, Social Emotional Learning Day on the eighth of March. And we had a lot of activities. So we had like rock paintings, Zen Room, exercising walk, and like so many others. We also had an assembly that day, which talked about social emotional learning. Then we have Meadow Farms fundraiser, which is happening where you can purchase products to support the class of 2024, and that will be running all the way up to April. We have our Boys Varsity Ice Hockey Team, who had their CIAC Division Two first round this month. And I would like to congratulate again with the Boys and Girls Basketball, the Wrestling Team, the Indoor Track, and like all of those teams that came in. I congratulate them all. We also have the Varsity Boys Swim and Dive, who had their CIAC State Opens. And I want to congratulate Corbin Conlife, Conlife? Sorry. My mistake, last name, who broke the Windsor High School record in the 100-meter breaststroke with a time of 102.1 seconds. And we have our Varsity Baseball, who has their first scrimmage tomorrow against Enfield at 3:45 PM. Our Varsity Softballs, first game at Vernon Center Middle School at 9:00 AM on the 23rd. And on the 30th, we have our Varsity Boys Volleyball at 1:30 PM and the JV Boys Volleyball at 12:00 PM. Both are away games at the Hartford Magnet Trinity College Academy. Last Saturday, we had our Gospel Choir, who did a live concert at the Shiloh Baptist Church. They did an amazing job. And on the 28th, we had our Women's History Month Tina Turner Tribute, or we will have our Tina Turner Tribute at 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the auditorium at the Windsor High School. And I want to highlight the Robotics Team, who is having their FRC, which is the First Robotics Challenge Competition, this weekend on the 23rd and the 24th, both at the Western New England University. And the opening ceremony starts at 10:30 AM and the competition will start from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM on both days. We had our FCCLA Club, who had a competition at the Yards Goat Stadium. The organization was Pro Start and they presented their professional skills. They had five seniors who were on the team and they had to prepare three course meals, which is the appetizer, the entree, and a dessert within an hour. So that amazing job to them. We had our HBCU Panel Event that happened today from 1:00 to 2:00 PM in the Windsor High School Auditorium. And a field trip called A Day in the Hill, where Mr. Fury attended with some students, where they went to the Connecticut's Capitol Building to meet some representatives and senators and all those students were able to ask questions. We also had the Hartford National College Fair, or we will have our National College Fair tomorrow and the next day, both from 9:00 to 11:30 AM. At the, or PM, or no, AM, sorry. At the Connecticut Convention Center. So there will be about 220 colleges and they're free to go to. So I would definitely recommend going there because college is, college is a big thing to, a big step in our lives. And then on the, on the 20th, we have our juniors taking their SATs. So good luck to you juniors and to those freshmen and sophomores. You guys better be ready because that's not too far away. And seniors, you know, we're chilling. And then on the 21st, at 7:00 PM, we have the Recording Tech Class, who will be presenting their own original work at the auditorium for, for free. And I, I think it will be really interesting. You, everyone should go see it. We have our JROTC Military Ball that's happening on the 22nd. And lastly, on the 27th, we have our Winter Sports Awards Night at six, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM in the auditorium. So yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Certainly a lot of things going on. Questions or comments for our student representative? The National College Fair, is there a bus from Windsor High for students?
I don't believe so. I think you have to like drive there to get there.
Yourself to go, okay. Thank you very much for your report and all the things that are going on and so many things to be thankful for and all our students who have been honored and good luck to those students who'll be taking the SATs. And again, as I've said last time, you're welcome to stay, but I know you are a student first. We always say even with our sport teams, these are student athletes. So thank you again. Next item on the agenda is the President's Report. As Sophia had indicated, I attended CAPE on the Hill, our Lobbying Day, along with Mr. Lockhart, President Lockhart from CAPE, the president hat on, and Mr. Panos. With three students, as Sophia alluded to, they got to hear from President Lockhart and the leadership of the Education Committee early on. We also then marched to the Capitol with Mr. Panos chanting, keep the promise. Maybe that was Mr. Lockhart, sorry. Got the wrong name here. What was it? Part of the march. Had his fist in the air several times, so. And that reference had to do with a bill that was passed last year by both sides of the legislature, the House and the Senate, signed by the governor to add $150 towards K through 12 education. And there's been some talk about splitting that money up. And so this was an opportunity for us, not only with the march, but while we met with our legislators to talk about that of keeping that money with K to 12. There is clearly a need also for additional monies for early childhood education. And my own opinion is we need to find extra money for that and not to detract from what's already allocated. Our students and Mr. Panos and myself also got a tour of the Capitol. And we met with Jane Garibay and Tammy Zawistowski. And we met with Jane Garibay and Tammy Zalistowski. Now Tammy is no longer our state rep, but was a longtime representative that had Windsor. And we need all the friends on the Hill that we can get. We also had a good meeting with Senator Kissel, who also has a small little sliver of Windsor, happens to be my state senator. He was very gracious, really interested in what the students, what the students' concerns were, and many spoke to the social emotional learning that we've heard so much about, and the problems with that. And again, he was very attentive, and I thank him and his staff. We pulled him out of a meeting. We tried to get Senator McCrory to also be pulled out of a meeting, but he's co-chair of the Education Committee, and we weren't able to do that with the time that we had allotted to us. And he apologized, but just the timing didn't work out. Luckily, we heard from Doug in the morning as co-chair before we marched to the Capitol. I participated in March 1st at JFK in Paquannic for Read Across America. Always a fun day, and I saw Ms. Cantor who participated as well at JFK. And that's always a great day, so. Last night, I attended briefly STEM Night at Paquannic. They had activities in both the library and gym, and great to see students coming out and showing their parents some of the things that they do in the classroom. I was there also to help set up Team Paragon. We always bring a robot when we're invited, and students get to drive the robot. We had to make sure that bumpers were on the robot as the students were driving, and there was always a student from the team nearby. I participated in the Chair Roundtable at CAPE this past several weeks ago. This, again, they do it monthly with the chairs or presidents of the boards, and the topic this time had to do with the right to read legislation and also budgets. And there's a lot of other people who are suffering from the issue, most of them, of the fiscal cliff, of monies that they relied on. Many like us, who would have wanted to spend a lot of money on hard items such as commercial vans, so we could take kids in smaller groups. But we saw that the need for both the learning loss and the social disconnectivity and trauma that we needed, we believed as a board, putting monies in that, and Dr. Hill, as most of it was ESER funds, believed that that was necessary. I attended briefly Dr. Hill's coffee chat today, which featured Dr. Anthony Davis, President of Livingstone College in North Carolina, and it sounds like he had a busy day today, meeting with students in the afternoon and parents and the like in the evening. That's my report. Are there any questions? Okay. Next item is school liaison reports. First Windsor High School, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Fury, President Fury. Our student liaison took my shine, but no, it's okay, because she was really, really thorough. She told me about things that I didn't even know about. So I just want to lift again that tomorrow is SAT Day, that includes my child. Let's keep everybody lifted. Everybody get a nice night of sleep, and breakfast in the morning, and everyone else at the high school, grades nine, 10, and 12 have no school. So if you do have a parent that can drive you to the fair, that'd be great, down at the convention center. I'll also lift that there is a, the Music Tech Concert on the 21st of this week at the high school from 7:00 to 9:00. And I also want to lift up, I know she mentioned, you know, everybody's mentioning the sports and all the accolades and everything, but Corbin Conliff, that's a big deal. That's a big deal, all the students, I'm very excited. But I just want to lift up Corbin Conliff and Ayanna Franks, because it's like history and groundbreaking and shattering. And I also want to lift that these are students of color, and Corbin Conliff is a student of color who's in swimming, and you rarely see it. And for him to be able to shatter those glass ceilings, I think it's not robbery to mention him, and he's also a junior. So can you imagine what he'll do next year? So that's amazing. And I've known the family forever. I also want to share, and I know she did mention this, but she thought that it already passed, the Women's History Month Tribute Concert to the late Tina Turner is on March 28th at the high school, so next week, 7:00 to 9:00. And I guess I should also mention that the spring break is next month, but it's before the next time we meet again, and that's April 8th through the 12th. And shout out to girls basketball, because my baby, I'm very misty.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wallaston.
I guess my thunder was stolen in times too. Yes, it is your baby. I would just say, congratulations to all that's come before us today. It truly does take a lot of dedication and hard work to excel in athletics on top of, I know Captain, or Mr. Kears is sitting here with us, and he's always a big proponent of making sure that these kids are on top of their work, as I'm sure the rest of our coaches are. So congratulations to them as well, just from me this time. And, you know, I am very honored, especially this year, to be in such a winning town, you know? There's just so many good things happening here. It's a really good time to be a part of Windsor and all the good things happening here. Aside from that, to the students, stay well rested and good luck on your SATs.
Thank you. Any questions for the high school representatives? Okay, Sage Park, starting with Mr. Panos.
Okay. There will be student-led conferences in March 20, 21, and 22. Students will lead conversations with their parents about their goals and the progress of their work. Sage Park eighth graders, Birgie Augustine, Mia Bailey, and Claire Passon recently participated in the Connecticut History Day Competition. Birgie and Claire placed third in their region and will go on to the state competition in May. There are only five divisions. We are in the Northwest Division, which covers from Suffield down through Hartford down into Glastonbury, and then Points. It's held at UConn for our region, so it's really quite, you know, there's about 38 towns in there for them to get third. This is really great, and they're going to go on to the state competition in May. That's really excellent. There's also this year's Sage Park Artists, eighth graders Lauren Johnson, Maxine Mirroy, and Angela Campbell placed in the top three in the middle grade division of the state. Connecticut Future Problem Solvers Art Competition, this is a Future Problem Solvers is an organization that has several aspects to it, one of them being art. They will be honored at the state awards ceremony later this month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just a couple of short things. Thank you. We were at the PTO meeting this week with myself, Secretary Lockhart, Mr. Wallaston, and Mr. Panos, just discussing the budget with the parents there. It was really great. They have a new president of the PTO at Sage Park, and they're still looking, they're still in a bit of a rebuilding mode, so if folks out there are looking to get involved, it'd be really great. The other thing, just to kind of give a shout outs to, are the Student Writers Magazine Contest winners, Eva Li, Violet Avsado, Michaela Livin, and Thatcher Mato, all won awards for the Connecticut Student Writers Magazine Contest, which was awesome. And then, as well as, there were some two semifinalists, and again, I apologize if I butcher any names here, on Letters About Literature Contest winners, which included Lila Daly and Aubrey Sarah. So shout outs to those guys as well. And that's it.
Thank you.
I want to point out that Mr. King gave a nice little summary of the budget during this, to the PTO.
Any questions for Sage Park Representatives? Okay. Next is Clover Street School, Mr. Madison.
Nothing specific. Didn't get a chance to meet Mrs. Lee, but I went to the PTO meeting, and the award ceremony they had was wonderful. She manages the troops well, the PTO is very well organized, so nothing specific.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Madison?
I just want to say to Mr. Madison, I did follow up with the Public Building Commission about the drainage at the kickball field, with somebody, the holes in the field, and the cracks in the basketball court. So I did follow up with that, so I'm sure the gym teacher will follow up with you as well to see how the town's moving on that. And I did alert Danielle as well, that I did mention that at the PBC meeting, so she wouldn't be blindsided by it.
Thank you. Thank you. John F. Kennedy School, Ms. Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. I attended the monthly PTO meeting at the school, JFK, and Mrs. Jorgensen gave a great speech on welcoming the new students coming up to the middle school. Awesome job. And one of the vice principals was there. I don't, I'm not sure how to pronounce her last name, it starts with a B, I always. Thank you. And it was really great presentation that she gave. I also want to say right now, thank you to all the board members, because we know how hard we work, we're diligent at it, and try and give our board appreciation month. You know, we spend a lot of time trying to get things done, and it's, you know, fiscally responsible being that, and to the students, we owe a lot, you know, to them, trying to get things done. Also, a great big congratulations to Sue Lyons, our District Period Educator of the Year, which she's quite excited about, I think she does a great job, I love her. March 1st was Read Across America, guest readers, had a great time reading to the kids. I saw Mr. Fury there and some other people. I think that Mrs. Siliman and Mrs. Abbott did a great job, along with other people, putting it together. It was well organized, and it just ran nice and smooth, had a blast. Next March, I'm sorry, that was a PTO meeting on March 4th. We're celebrating Women's History Month, they've already had two women's assemblies at school. They had the parent-teacher conferences on March 13th and 15th. March 19th, which is today, the Spring Picture Days. And on March 22nd, they're going to do another women's assembly. And on March 28th, there's a coffee talk with Principal Gagne. It's going to be from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and they're going to have Student of the Month on that day. On March 29th, there's no school, it's Good Friday. April 1st is a monthly PTO meeting, and again, April 8th through the 12th is spring break, no school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for John F. Kennedy School? Oliver Ellsworth, Mr. Lockhart?
Yeah, just two things. One, I participated in the School Governance Council meeting last night, which was very informative, and they went over different aspects of the school data and stuff like that, and just really having a good conversation. Looking to participate in that function every other month I'm moving forth. And still making my rounds to the building two days a week, and doing what I'm supposed to be doing. And finally, I just want to thank this board, the town, the PBC, the town council, the town, everybody that we've agitated about moving forth with the resolution on the air quality situation in that building. Last night, during a special town council, a special town meeting, a resolution was passed to fund said situations and to move forth with the full throttle of the project. And I just want to say thank you, because this has been, quite frankly, a decade in the making, and I'm just glad that we were able to come together as a collaborative group to make it work. It was a very, very tense time, not only for the town, but for the staff and the students and the parents within that building. So we don't often say thank you enough to each other in the heat of the battles, so all those that participated and had a hand in this, just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Any questions regarding Oliver Ellsworth? Next, Paquannic School, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Paquannic PTO is going to be going to a Monster Jam this year. Unfortunately, the deadline was this afternoon at 5:00 PM to purchase tickets, but if you have, that event will be on Sunday, March 24th. They're all, the PTO is also sponsoring a Hartford Wolf Pack game. Tickets are now on sale for that event, and tickets have to be purchased by Monday, April 1st at 5:00 PM. And the game will be on Sunday, April 14th at 3:00 PM. Tickets are $17 each. There is no school this, or next Friday, excuse me, a Good Friday, but Paquannic School will be having a Easter egg hunt, and that will be at 10:00 AM. And if there is a rain, the rain date will be that Saturday, March 30th. Family climate surveys are available on the school website, if you haven't already done so. Please take the time to complete the survey, and all surveys need to be completed by April 15th. Registration for pre-K and kindergarten are now open. The next PTO meeting will be on Monday, April 1st, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. I plan on attending that meeting. April 8th through the 12th is spring break. And finally, last night was Paquannic's Family STEM Night, that was mentioned earlier. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but I heard that it went very well.
Thank you. Is it true that the Easter Bunny may be showing up at Paquannic School? Do you know anything about that?
Yes, yes, he will be showing up.
Okay.
For all the kids.
I guess people may know who the Easter Bunny may be, but don't tell the kids out here. Any question for Paquannic? Dr. Hill, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. So before I begin, I'd like to call Dr. Haiti to give an update to the board on the process for the ECE course curriculum adoption process.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So just really quickly, so ECE courses, we've been running ECE courses for a number of years, so our new courses that was voted and approved by the board back in February, I want to say, the American Studies ECE course follows the same format. Our teachers who are interested in teaching that course, they have to apply, and UConn goes through a process, they have to meet some standards and qualification. I think they do have to have a master's in the content itself. So our teachers apply, they hear back from UConn, whether they're accepted or not. Once they are accepted, they are assigned a faculty mentor that they work with to come up with the syllabus for the course, and then they start working on the curriculum for the course. So Windsor Public Schools does not approve ECE courses curriculum. This is a UConn course, so the American Studies course will follow the same format. May 22nd is orientation for our new teachers. We have placed that course on the course selection form for students if they are interested. So we will not find out if the course is actually running or not until we create the master schedule at the high school, which will be happening sometimes towards the end of May. If we have enough students requesting the course, and we have teachers who've been approved by UConn, then we start the process of creating the syllabus and the resources. Part of the application process is submitting a sample syllabus, so we do have a sample syllabus that we've shared with the board before, which is approved by UConn for the American Studies course. And basically, we do spend the summertime with our teachers, our faculty mentor at UConn, to come up with all the resources, lessons, and activities that students will be doing next year if the course actually runs. Any questions?
Any questions?
So you say that you have the teachers selected on our side that are going to? Okay. And do you think that this is, they plan to have this ready for the upcoming year?
Yes, if we have students who've requested the course, we'll run it the upcoming year.
And you'll know that by the end of this year?
Yes.
Or what? You don't, okay. We don't have anybody yet who's signed up for the course.
We don't know. We are in the process of course selection, so we're not going to have final numbers until we finish sectioning and building the master schedule, which is probably not going to happen until the end of May.
End of May. Thank you.
Any other questions? Back to Dr. Hill.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Haiti. So March is Board Appreciation Month for members. This is an opportunity for us to publicly extend our appreciation for their dedicated service to our children. Our board members are generous with their time and commitment to public school education. Thank you for your continued service. So each board member has a mug with the Windsor logo on it, excuse me, and they also receive framed pictures, which were actually done by our Windsor High School junior, Bonnie Chambers, and it's entitled Bart's Bridge. So they each have a framed piece of art in limited edition, so by one of our students. The water is not a gift, it's just there regularly. But you can put it in the mug and show off the mug. So just a little thank you. I cannot take any credit, somebody said thank you to be early, like that would be Sally Brown and Robin, like the ladies think of everything, that's why. They make you look good. Appreciate you. And today, it has been a long day, but a fun day. Today, we had special guests from Livingstone College in Salisbury, North Carolina, President Davis and his Enrollment Services Vice President came as well, and they, we started off the day with a coffee talk here, we did a podcast, then we went to the high school and met with students. I was absolutely shocked at the number of students who showed up in that auditorium. There were a lot more students than I thought, you know, for a 1 o'clock event, talking to college folks, you know, maybe 20, 25 kids. I know it was well over 50 kids who showed up. The big piece that I want the community to hear is that this is a relationship that I had started working on a few months ago. He reached out to me by a mutual friend here in Connecticut. Dr. Davis is a resident, not a resident, excuse me, but a native of Connecticut, now in North Carolina, and so he has always looked to give back to his home state, and he reached out to me a few months ago and said that he wanted to build a relationship with Windsor Public Schools and share the story about his college, Livingstone College. We do have students at Windsor who have, over the years and the history of Windsor Public Schools, have gone off to some HBCUs, but typically here in the Northeast, we don't know much about HBCUs, which would be historically black colleges and universities, anything below Virginia typically. That's how it works. When you ask folks to name HBCUs up here in the Northeast, they will typically say things like Howard, you know, Hampton, we have a number of people who went to Delaware State now, and we'll have maybe a couple who go to Virginia State, so Norfolk State, so they don't really go deep. And there are a ton of HBCUs in this country, and they have a historical purpose and a present-day purpose. And I appreciate the message that the president shared with me, and after vetting him for a couple of months, I felt that he was someone definitely worthy to stand before our children and our parents. So great talk with the students. Students were filling out applications right there on the spot. The biggest thing for me was surprised, I did not know he was coming with this, but he has set up scholarships at his school, and so he asked students, who in here has a 3.5 GPA or higher? Number of kids, raise your hand, a lot of kids, because we have a lot of kids doing amazing things. And he said, I can offer you a presidential scholarship right now, which is after whatever you get from FAFSA, your grants and everything, not loans, I fill the gap, I pay the bill. For, as a parent whose daughter is waiting for the rest of her acceptances, I know the FAFSA is not going to help me, but it would be nice to hear a president tell me that, don't worry about it, we got the rest of the bill. So students were excited, we have a number of athletes who don't have any solid plans yet. He, I mean, I don't want to get choked up, he literally was like, I'm the decision maker, I'm the president, it's all here. He called his coaches right there, had our boys, basketball players, talking to the basketball coach, track members talking to the track coach, softball players talking to the softball coach, and he said, volleyball, anything you got, we're going to talk directly to the coach, and I have a relationship with your superintendent, you guys come down here, we're taking care of you. So he brought the same message to the parents. Vice President Taylor was there this evening, feel free to chime in, whatever she would like to share on that piece, but he spoke to the parents this evening, had to leave to get here to the board meeting, but I think the parents like what he was saying, I like what he was saying, and I want to build more of those relationships with these schools. The college fair thing is nice, it's someone's going to do it. I like the personal touch, because unfortunately, even in 2024, many families are colored, and a lot of my white families don't really know the college process. And when you go to these big fairs, they're just, they're factory fairs, they're like job fairs, right? Everybody has a table, you go up, people hand you stuff. It is, I can say with a certainty, a rarity, if ever, you will have the chance to talk to the president and the vice president of enrollment services at the same time, face to face. Because those are the two decision makers, and when they say, here you have money, you have money. If they say, you're not getting in, you're not getting in. It's right there, you don't have to worry about, you know, admissions counselors and reps. We have the two top people here talking to our kids, and once Ms. Fudge and her team confirms their transcripts, they will receive letters with their acceptances to the college, as well as their award letters, right there. And that was just done today. So that was incredible. Mr. Taylor, do you have anything to add to that piece?
Yes, it was wonderful. I'm aware of Livingstone College, I have family members that attended Livingstone and other HBCUs, some that did study here at Windsor High School and graduate from Windsor High School. I did not attend an HBCU, but he's absolutely right, there's never a time where I've seen higher education, a president, go around and speak directly to students, you just don't see that. So the high touch, the amount of time he spent fielding questions from parents and students, the fact that there were students that were there earlier in the day and came back with parents, showed the commitment of our students, so it was really encouraging to see. And what he was doing for juniors, you forgot the part where he was doing for juniors.
I left something for you, it was as long.
Oh, okay, great, oh, okay, okay. So for the juniors, there's something for them too, because he's waiving application fees, so it stands even for our juniors for fall semester for them to apply, they will not have to pay the application fee, it will be waived, because he came and spoke to them already. So that's like, that's a huge, a huge deal, and excited to see what comes of it. It's a really small, it's a smaller school, it's Salisbury, North Carolina, beautiful campus, I've been there before, and again, I've known people who have gone, my cousin is the former SGA president, so I'm texting her, Dr. Davis is here, she's like, you're kidding, she's in law school now, and she grew up in Hartford, so it's just really great to see him return to his home state and not build a pipeline, but build a talent pool.
A talent pool?
Yeah, of students that can come and get a great education, high-touch, valuable education that he's providing, so we are interested as well, so I'm excited to hear more.
And I appreciated hearing him say, you know, let me be clear, like Windsor, just the number of kids that raised their hand with 3.5 or higher, right? Like so often, we talk about the stuff that's negative, work that needs to be done, it's real, I don't hide from work, but we have more amazing than not. And so when he said that, and he saw, he said, this is, this is easy, this is an easy school, Windsor, we definitely have to come back here. He said, these are low-risk students, easy to give money to, because you've demonstrated your academic prowess already in high school, so coming to our college, we take care of you. And just the flat starting price, all-in, room, board, everything is $26,000 this year. So you're getting scholarships on top of that, you know, I'm thinking for families that maybe you don't get everything paid for, but you're starting at 26. We're here in New England, which is like college purgatory, right? We're paying so much money, because our state schools and universities are competing with all the private schools. My master's is in higher ed administration, which covered higher ed history, and I can tell you, I've said it before at this dais, our state universities are not following their land-grant institution origins. We like bragging about them, how hard they are to get into and everything else, but that's not their mission, and that wasn't what they were created for. The schools in the South and out West are still holding to their land-grant institution missions. Our schools, the UCons, I'm sorry, I teach there, the UMasses, I went there, they are more concerned with competing with all the private schools that are in this area. And that just makes it tougher for a atypical citizen to get into their school. So one of the things that's happened, and I learned as a trustee for eight years, kids are starting to cross state lines when they normally wouldn't have. Look at, here's a school in North Carolina, it's already cheaper than our state schools, starting off the bat. So I just think that's a big deal. There are other HBCUs that I look forward to making that connection, I can't guarantee the president will come, but what I will guarantee is that we're not going to play around, we're going to have real decision makers. So I want students to understand, my objective for them, I spoke to the students today, is for you to leave Windsor with a plan. Everyone doesn't go to college, we know that, but there needs to be a plan, and I can't have kids with 3.5, 3.8, and 4.0 GPAs sitting here in late March talking about, I don't really know what I'm doing. That's shame on us, and we're going to fix that. So enough about that part. All right, Windsor Public School is now accepting pre-K applications from March 1st to March 30th only, and that's in caps, folks, only, so please don't call my office after that date, because you think you don't go around my, we set this up a couple of years ago, and folks wait, so that's why I'm taking the time as a superintendent to announce it. Do not call my office after the 30th, I am not going to have a conversation with you because you missed a whole month of application. There is 30 days to apply, and we start advertising months ahead of time, please put your application in, and we only have so many spots. And I say that, it sounds rough, I know people, everybody wants to make everyone happy, that's not how the world works, right? You had 30 days, there are always time limits on things, people wait, and then they want us to scramble and figure things out. I need you to apply on time. The Welcome Center is accepting those applications, and the Welcome Center is now accepting new student registrations for grades K to 12 for the 24, 25 school year. Please visit the district's website at www.windsortct, all one word, dot org, for their pre-K application and online registration for new students entering grades K to 12. All current Windsor Public School students will need to complete the re-enrollment process beginning on May 1st, 2024, May 1st, not August 18th, May 1st. I am thankful I don't have to do that anymore, that is all over now, thank you, Lord, all right? Praise them. There will be no, this is sad for me, there will be no summer enrichment program this year. In its place, we will run Camp Treehouse, which will be similar to the summer enrichment activities from the past few years for grades 1 through 5. In addition, for grade 6 through 8, we will run Camp Treehouse Leaders in Training. More information on both programs and registration is on the district website. Sad for me, not because of what we're doing, but it's not as big a program as we had when we had the ESTER funds, but we understand, you know, things come to an end. On Thursday, March 7th, 2024, a climate survey for families was emailed and sent by text to all families in Windsor Public Schools. We will be assessing the school climate using a brief 29 to 31 question, multiple-choice online survey. This year's survey is designed to assess perception of the school environment, including safety, relationships, support for learning, and communications within each school. Family surveys close on April 15th. If families have not already done so, please take a moment to complete the survey. The district will be closed for Good Friday on Friday, March 29th. April break will be from Monday, April 8th through Friday, April 12th, offices will be open. On Wednesday, April 3rd, the Board of Education budget will be presented to the Town Council at 6:30 PM. Ms. Bachelder, President Fury, and Mr. Lockhart, and I will be, will attend the meeting. Those are superintendent's announcements, any questions?
One comment I'd like to make regarding Dr. Davis, I came to the coffee chat this morning, I was very impressed, and one of the things, two of, there were some, a couple of good questions of him, one had to do with connections, because especially if they're coming from Windsor down to North Carolina, they may not have been to the South before or to a college campus before, and he stressed the importance that they have connecting to every student. We talk about equity, we talk about that a lot here on the board in Windsor Public Schools, of looking at the needs of every student, and I was very impressed. And I think when you're in a smaller college, you also can have that chance of, I went to UConn, you know, you never knew where, because people didn't show up to an 8 o'clock class, he talked about it, after you haven't been, shown up for a class a few times, three times, you'll get the residence hall person specifically coming to see you, asking, what's going on, how can we help you? Maybe something personal in their lives or whatever. And then the connection that they appear to have with a lot of businesses, they're big into STEM, so it kind of attracted my eyes when I heard that, that they're a big STEM school, and he talked about Amazon and Microsoft and connections that they have, several other banks as well that are located nearby there, and, because we really want to get real-world experience for our kids. It's no longer, you're going to go to college four years, and maybe in your senior year, you finally look at what you really may be doing on a job, and so I was very impressed with that.
So just to follow up on that, President Fury, it'll, you'll hear it on the podcast as well, he stressed the point that HBCUs represent 10% of all the colleges, just 10%. Yet they graduate 24% of all the black folks in STEM. That's, that's an amazing stat right there, so 10% of all the colleges in our country, but they represent or produce 24% of the graduates in STEM.
Questions for Dr. Hill on his report? Ms. Taylor, so first?
I just want to piggyback on the STEM piece, as we know, you know, I'm an HR background, and we're seeing a lot of just how like competitive the world of STEM is right now, fighting over diverse talent. So I'm consistently telling people, like, you know, if you haven't thought about, you know, what your major is going to be, and if you, you know, you do, you know, relatively well in the STEM field, really consider it, and consider your options for colleges, and don't just go with the first offering of things. I was telling Dr. Hill, my cousin, a class of 2000 Windsor High School, she went to North Carolina A&amp;T HBCU, and then she went to Tuskegee HBCU, and she's a veterinarian, a black female veterinarian, and she went to Windsor High School. And I think oftentimes, people, when you're thinking of, you know, these fields and that can't be me, I think we were kind of brain sharing that we just need to bring, they need to see it more. Students need to see more, you know, hey, I went to high school track too. So I think that, you know, you can't be what you can't see, and so just bringing these opportunities to our families and to our students, and just sitting it right in front of them and giving them the opportunity to just see that there's more things to know about outside of, you know, Windsor, the town of Windsor, I think that that's a value add to the things we do here in Windsor Public Schools.
And Dr. Davis, if I have his three points, I hope I don't mess it up, he stressed access, opportunity, and experience, so that's, no, I messed it up? So everybody's going to say no, but nobody's going to give me an answer, that's my team. Opportunity, access, I know.
Exposure.
Exposure, thank you. Same word as exp, it's, I just watched my wedding, so that's a Greek word, it means the same thing as experience. So, right? But access, opportunity, and exposure. So I, that's, that's one of the things that I stressed when I was at High School Inc., that when I would talk to the corporations that were sponsoring my school, and they're like, well, what do you need for your students? And they initially expected regular school-sounding things, like, uh-uh, no, I need these kids from Hartford to see the other side of Hartford. So we start off with little things, like having dinner, you know, at Max's downtown, in the private room, and they, when they looked at big lamb shanks, like, what is this? Like, you don't pick it up with your hand, they just put it down, right? You don't hold a knife like you're attacking it, it was killed already for you, right? So we took etiquette classes at the Hartford Club, my students took etiquette classes, and folks were like, why are you doing all this? Because I'm preparing them for a different life. We eating ribs, we eating ribs, right? There's only one way to eat a rib, but outside of ribs, you know, you don't want to be at, when you're in the corporate world or professional world, you're at lots of functions, and it kills me, I cringe when I see people attacking their food that's already cooked. It's not going to jump up, it's not coming It's not coming at you. But I wanted my students to not look out of place when they went to these nice restaurants with these corporate leaders. So that's why I did that. And they went to lots of dinners and functions in New York City, particularly on Wall Street at Sipperani's. So they were with millionaires and billionaires in the room. And I would always get the compliments that they just didn't even realize that they were students, the way they carried themselves. Because we made sure that we prepared them to be there. And then they had that exposure by going constantly to the point where there was like, yeah, I'm a little tired off like driving down there tonight with limousines, right? Like these little, they got picky. But I think that's what we need for students. And I like the fact that a president is saying, this is what I'm looking for. He said it over and over for my students. Like anybody can go to a college, just because you go to Harvard doesn't mean you're destined for success. And I've said that for years. People think that I went to Harvard and what does that mean? If you're, if you're not connected to the right people, you just have a really expensive degree. I've been served a latte by a whole bunch of people who have a Harvard degree. So you need to make sure you're connected to the right people. And you're going to a school that actually has a name. And as President Fury said, the companies behind them, right? So if you're working in STEM, are these companies working with your college to give you the internships? He talked about paid internships, you know, by your junior year. That matters because now you're getting that on the job exposure for a company. And then they're offering you a drop. So he also talks about students graduating with a diploma in one hand and job offers and contracts in their pocket. Big difference from coming out of college with multi-figure, six-figure debt and you got a diploma. So after the cookout, you're crying because you gotta pay back a hundred and ninety thousand dollars and you don't have a job. He kept it real and I wanted that for the students and parents. And the students were very attentive today and the parents were attentive this evening. That's what we're looking for, people to be real with our students and not just real with facts, but also provide them the opportunity to change that trajectory.
Any other questions? Ms. Cantor?
I have a comment. When the college offers good internships with these companies, you meet a lot of people and you get on the job, training experience. And one, it makes such a difference because you have contacts. And I know a lot of people who went to different colleges that had that opportunity and they were offered like, I'm not kidding, like twenty some odd jobs when they graduated. And that was back in the seventies. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, the next item is the residency report. Dr. Hill?
Okay, okay. Okay, so I'm gonna call up Mr. Kears. Give our residency, residency report.
Good evening.
Hello, good evening. Different hat now.
Yeah, a little bit. So first of all, thank you guys for recognizing our team. But I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that the last time we were recognized was twenty-two. We were here with baseball. This is our sixth championship since then. Three boys, three girls since spring of twenty-two, just wanted to say that. That's what happens when you win all the time. I'm just saying. So so far since twenty-three, twenty-two, some of you will notice if you compare it to last year, around about the same time, once a high school. We've had seventeen investigations. The removals were really up. I think at this time last year was three. We have ten removals from the high school. That, these numbers are, this is written in soft sand cause actually a young man is not going to go for a hearing. So he'll be added to that number, that'll be eleven. Sage Park, we had twenty-seven investigations, but only two removals. Sage Park probably, not probably, they call it more investigations than anyone else for various different reasons. Purquina School, four investigations, zero removals. Oliver Ellsworth School, three investigations, one removal. Clover Street, four investigations, one removal. John F Kennedy School, four investigations, one removal. Outplay Students, four investigations, zero removals. Total sixty-three investigations, fifteen removals. Right now, again, because this is some soft sand, I guess, the twelve open investigations is now actually up to fourteen. I expect that at least half of those kids will probably end up being removals. What happens with some of the open investigations, the reason why they're open, those, some of those parents are, they, they come up with a lot of different things. And we have a, as an example, a lot of people have custody papers. So I might have custody of my son. And he might be staying, supposed to stay with me, but he's not. That's a lot more difficult to prove. And jeepers creepers, it takes a lot for us to get to a place where I don't wanna have a hearing. I wanted them to realize you can't have no hearing because I've been to your house like seven times. I've watched your kid not come out of there seven times. And then watch, have call, speak to someone at the school. Yep, they've getting driven there. So that is, leaves no doubt. If you only do it one or two times, oh no, that was too nice. They spent the night with their auntie, but they still live with me. So some families are, they, they really go through a lot. Which we should feel good because they really wanna go to our schools. I mean, you'd be surprised, some of the towns these kids live in. Again, and I, I probably shouldn't say this when I'm saying, there was a young lady, I was like, you live in Glastonbury, why would you, I mean, you could go to Glastonbury schools. But she worked over here and it was easy to come here and go to work and bring the kids to school ahead. So that's one of the ones that's gone.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Are, are you done with your report?
Yes, I'm done, that's it. Last piece, certificate of residency, because I know that was a question. Those numbers are up. We have four hundred and forty-five students on certificate of residency. Only two of our removals, and I put this here because I know this is a question, were on certificates of residency, only two. We check that every fall. So I would expect that this fall, because those numbers are up, I'll probably have more investigations of those type. The numbers are up by a lot from this time last year. In fact, these are probably the highest numbers we had since before COVID. The numbers are gone way down and now that, that seems like they might be a rise.
We, we have a couple of new members here. If you could explain what a certificate of residency is?
So a certificate of residency is if I have a family member, friend, he or she wants to come live with me. They can't, and they can't produce a title, a deed, a lease. He or she, I can sign a certificate of residency saying that my friend is living with me and these kids are living with me and I have a place for them to stay. Bedrooms for everyone, for them to come and stay with me. And those are good for a year. So it allows them to come and, and, and stay with me. And with a certificate of residency, it talks about the penalty that you could be penalized for up to ten thousand, which only place I ever know of, you probably remember the case, it was Bridgeport and Stanford kid. And then everybody wanted to hang Stanford for arresting the woman and charging her that. That's the only time I know someone was charged. And this was at least seven, eight years ago. But you can be charged if you lie about that. But what can happen is they agree to allow you to come into their home and verify that, yep, this is a bedroom. This is where Johnny sleeps or Jamie sleeps or whomever. And you can go and verify that. Yes, it has to be notarized, have to take it and go get notarized. And you go visit and it's, you know, it's, it's a process. It, it was funny, I, I told Day L, well, my, my daughter, who graduated from Norfolk State is now, and she's proud papa, she's getting her doctorate, had a white coat ceremony a little while ago. Graduated from Windsor High first, ran track and she ran track at Norfolk State. So, and, and off from that class, I didn't go, you know, you got lawyers, medical doctors off from that same class. But I took her with me. I was driving, I said, hey, come on, we gotta go visit some houses. And she was like, why do these people let you in? From, it was a whole different perspective because people, you know, think about you yourselves. Like right now, if I came to your house, ain't nothing your home. So if Dr. Hill will let me, I'll come to your house at eleven o'clock at night, but I can't go that late. So, but if you go to people homes, two o'clock, three o'clock, they not home, they at work. So you have to go after. So if you go and it's dark, believe me, I've had more dogs set on me. I chuckle, I say, man, this is worse than when I was a police officer. I did rage. No, I had a guy greet me with a shotgun at the door. It's his house, he could greet illegal. You can look it up, I gave you the address. No, because it was, it was, it was incident there. Not here, but no, no, because it's, it's public information. They got, they made an arrest. They made a, there was a shooting there after about a month. I told the police, dude came with a shotgun, I said, something wrong with him. So I said, yo, man, put that down. And he went and put it down. We talked, the, the girl was there. About a month later, they had a shootout, he shot a guy, they shot right in the street. You can look it up. Daniel, I won't give you the address, go look it up. Oh my goodness, they tell me that, they think it's the police. And I explained, I'm not, one person said, you close enough. But the funniest was a woman told me, who's that knocking on my door like they paying my mortgage? And it was hilarious. So they, everybody ain't friendly when you go into the house, especially in the evening, night or weekends. Cause you have to go when people are home. Most of the visits, there's nobody home, but it gives me a layout of where stuff is. I can see cars, whose car is what. You use our public information to find out our car, does a person have a car registered in town? And by that, you see if they paying taxes. So if your car, then I use Ring Towns, I start and I go out. So now you live in Windsor, but your car, you paying taxes in, let's say, Granby. Why are you paying taxes in Granby for your car and you live in Windsor? So then we go from there, so.
Mr. Madison?
Yeah, I appreciate your work. I just have some basic questions because I'm, I'm new here. So when you say you investigate, how do you get your leads? Like, how do you know who to investigate?
Well, it varies. People will call, like I said, if you notice Sage Park, if a kid come to school late a couple of times, somebody from over there go call and say, hey, this kid is late, could you check him out? Return mail. One of the things that, and I spoken with Ms. Bachelder about the way in which, so if I, if my last name, which is more and more common, if I have a different last name than my kid and it says to the parents or guardian of Joe Smith. Will Joe Smith name in on the mailbox? And this is, I found this out going to the post office. It's a substitute mail person, he or she is easier to not deliver the mail. Oh, I don't know, put it in the, and so sometimes that stuff gets kicked back. And because the kid's name is not on there and a lot of those are just real easy. You go, and then sometimes it'll say undeliverable. And you go there and they will say they can't see that dress. I don't know if y'all know these prescription glasses, so it ain't like I got some supervision. I can see the number, I'm like, what the heck? I can see that from my vehicle. And I go there and I'll take a picture of it. I've gone to the post office, look at this number. Or they couldn't see it, they sees over there. But that type of stuff, so a lot of them are as simple as that. One was a girl, I kid you not, she lived right around the corner from the school, her parents bought her home. And she was late every day, like super late, not like five, ten minutes late, like hour, hour and a half. So that would bring the attention, but she just was getting up late, coming to school.
So your investigations aren't necessarily for residency, they can be for anything?
It could, it's, it's usually residency, but I would, sometimes with a social worker or, or usually a social worker more than a guidance counselor, sometimes the dean at the high school, I'll go like, if you have a kid who is habitually tardy, it moves into the area of like truancy. And we'll go see that, look to verify it. And sometimes it turns into a residency. You find out, like, stuff like that.
And so when you say you've done sixty-three so far this school year, are you personally involved in all those? Or do you have staff?
I do every single one of them. They, you think, listen. But you, but you make it fit. Like if you talk, if you were to talk to the coaches, so if we gonna leave or going for a track meet at nine, I go visit somebody's house at seven thirty that morning. We come back at eight, I go visit somebody's house at eight thirty.
Thank you.
And he does weekends and holidays especially because that's when he can catch.
Snow days are the best day to go visit.
And you were a marine once, right?
Always a marine, but yes. So, so you go, no, the snow day is the best day.
He's volunteering to go with you.
I'll go with you.
And, and snow day is the best day to visit. Because you can see if someone's been in out. And just, I really, if, if we could, if you could audio tape it, it's sometimes hilarious. Like you, you might remember this complaint, I told a lady, she said, the kids went to school. I was like, how did they get that? I said, I want all of your kids to high jump for me and long jump. Cause if they made it from that porch to the street, they breaking world records. And they, I don't know if you remember, they called to complain. The lady complained when I said that. But they didn't live in town, they got out of town and there were four people in that house. Cause they weren't there.
Let me just add in here real quick too, as Mr. Madison, you asked like how's? I think it was the Kears, sometimes the kids just telling themselves. When, when they're, when they're talking, right? Like a kid may just tell himself, like the teacher say, well, you got detention. Or I, I can't come to detention, why not? Cause I don't live here and I can't get a ride back here. Busted. Or they upset a friend and a friend tells them. So
They, they will tell.
Snitch is alive.
To Dr. Hill's point, one of these on air, it was right after Halloween. The kid said they went trick or treating and a neighbor in town. And the teacher said, why? And the kid said, because that's where I live. So the teacher wrote a, go check this out. And sure enough, that's, that's, that's where they live.
Other questions? Mr. Pan?
Oh, I know Mr. Panos adds a question.
Yeah, I, I have to say that the four hundred and fifty-five is higher than I've ever seen.
Not ever, but it's been since before COVID. When I first started, believe it or not, it was over five hundred.
I thought that was, yeah. The, now this can't be for, in other words, you can't come and stay at a friend's and pay rent, right? According to the, to the law.
Well, it doesn't say whether you can or not, and I don't know.
It said that in the, in the.
If you own a home and you say my cousin, whoever, who's gonna be able to, that? Okay, I got some good investigative ability, I ain't gonna be able to prove that.
Okay.
So, but people come and they do allow relatives, some of it could be because they've suffered a hardship, which is often the case. And he or she will go and stay there and they fill out a certificate of residency. But those are only good for a year, which is why I come next fall. In August, I'll start visiting the ones who are expired. Some of them, in fact, most of them probably will be extended, some of them won't, the people who have moved out. Other times is they just don't tell you, like we have people who move right within town. And they do not, that, that's what a lot of these investigations are. I lived on Broad Street, now I live on Elm Street and I just didn't tell the school. Now for you or me, that might be, okay, no, I'm telling them that I moved. They don't, oh, I just forgot, I didn't fill that out. And it's simple as that. A significant amount of people move within town, but do not notify the school when they move.
But, I mean, four hundred and forty-five students, I mean, if you were to investigate all these, I mean, that.
We don't, we don't have to investigate all of them. We'll, we'll take a look at the ones who are expired and then you go from there.
So, right. Hey, it just, you know, this is about thirteen percent of our total population. It was, it's a good, in other words, this is a significant portion of, of our, of our students in the game. The, so these, you know, certificate of residency, you know, have to be, you know, scrutinized. Because after all, I mean, we're not talking about a dozen here or twenty-five, that doesn't make a, a budgetary difference. But if you have a couple of hundred, you're talking money here. Because you're gonna have to add teachers for, you know, for that. That's gonna have an effect on, on, on a serious effect on. That's gonna have an effect on, 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 on a serious effect on, on the budget. So, I mean, do you, but do you think you need help with this? I mean, more residency officers to come up?
Come with me.
Maybe, maybe, maybe he could go. Maybe you could get some of those track teams.
Leonard's gonna go.
So, but know what I'm saying?
Well, what you do with the Cabe? I said, yes, well, we'll reduce the Cabe budget and we gonna have.
And try to be funny, if you went to ten homes a day, you get three hundred in one month. And for you, it sound like a lot. But that, go, go back. Back, do you remember back, you lived in ones in the nineties, right?
Sure.
Okay, you know, we used to stop over thirty thousand cars a year?
Yeah.
You know who stopped most of them? So, so that three hundred you talking about, that, he knows.
What, he stopped you?
No, one forty-eight. I stopped everybody. I would stop sixty-seven cars on my way home. So what I'm telling you is those numbers that sound like a lot to you, four hundred, wow, that's a whole lot.
Yeah, but you have, you have to do at least five. And, and I recall, you know, residency officers, you know, spending a week and a half per investigation.
No, no. To go to a certificate of residency is different. You just go into the house. That ain't like I'm doing an investigation. It, it may become an investigation. It may just, I'm going there just to verify, okay, this expired yesterday. Hey, Calvin still live here? Or no, he moved out. Okay. No, he still live here. You gotta renew that.
You still have to, you still have to make investigations to be assured that they're there at least five days a, a week or something like that.
Yeah, you want, no, no, not necessarily. If I go there and you, and I, you got a bedroom in there and you in there. Because the thing, the best part about going on a Saturday morning or going on a, say, Good Friday. All right. I'm going to visit some people's houses. Now, everybody, where you at? You supposed to be home. If you ain't away on vacation, you home. So that's a great day. You know how many houses you can go to? I ain't trying to be funny. I mean, Windsor's thirty-two square miles. You got like twenty-nine thousand people here. It don't take that long to drive and go and knock on some doors.
What thirty, what thirty square miles?
Nah, it's a little over that. It's closer to thirty-two. Look it up.
Okay, thirty-two. That's not, that's, well, you may know that. Okay.
Nah, I'm telling you.
I'm just going by Google.
I do know it.
Uh, Wikipedia doesn't know anything.
No, Wikipedia, no, I'm telling you.
But, but, uh, it, it just seems like an awful lot. Student, I'll, I'll bet you nobody around here has as many anywhere close.
I bet you they have more.
Where?
We have over, we have more kids in magnet schools than that.
Sure, sure. Yes.
So, yeah, it's other towns with way more. We have kids leaving. We just got a letter from Bloomfield with a kid who live here going to school in Bloomfield. Henry just got that letter. They've, because I don't investigate kids in other towns, but I can tell you this. I know factual, they have kids in other towns that ain't my responsibility that live here. Going to school in other towns. But that ain't for me to tell. I'm trying to get our kids that the ones that don't belong here out.
So I just want to add in, just so we understand. So this number, while it may be up, it is not historically the highest ever. And this, this situation is similar in other towns. Like, uh, Mr. Kears just shared. Certificate of residency, they expire, you investigate. But if someone has one, you go, you check. They're there, like, because we can't harass people either. So we have to keep that in mind. We can investigate when it's, it's clear something to investigate. But once people prove, and they don't have to like show you, you know, their life savings, like they just, this is my house. If my nephew lives at my house, does you, does he live here? He lives here. That, that is what it is. That's not a new thing, by the way, in education. Not even remotely for a century. It's not new. People live with other people. It just happens. Um, and it happens both ways. It happens in other towns, you know, people moving. And so certificate of residencies is what we created. That's what we have. And it's the same situation in other towns. I think, uh, Mr. Kears does an incredible job staying on top of it. I was aware of the previous residency officer. And yeah, so if he, if they're not supposed to be here. Mr. Kears is gonna find out and we take care of that.
The, the, the most common, Mr. Panos, to be honest, is grandparents. People, they, they move back home. They living, uh, with their grandparents. For whatever reason, I don't know.
Right.
What, what happens? They, they, and some of them, like people think, oh, they, they're from out of state. So they doing some heck of a commute. They commuting from like Virginia. Because they've moved back from Virginia to live with their parents.
Yeah, that's what it's for.
And they bring their kid and they're here.
Yeah, that's what it's for.
There's divorces. There's all kinds of stuff like that. And those things are common right now. And a lot of them are those situations. So it doesn't take much to verify, okay, you just moved back here from Virginia. Because this is one I just looked at. You just moved back here from Virginia. Where you living at? You living here going to school? You either living here or you doing some heck of a commuting. You should be super late every day.
Right. I mean, that's, that's what it's for. And, uh, you know, I, I don't think that was ever the big issue. The big issue is people creeping in from neighboring town. It's a, it'd be Bloomfield or Hartford, you know, is. Uh, uh, I one time asked, um, um, I called up Simsbury and asked them if, how many certificate of residence students that they had. They didn't even know the term.
You know why they didn't know it?
They didn't even know what it meant.
You know why they didn't know it? Simsbury got four buses of kids from Hartford that go there through that program. What is it?
Sure, sure. That's different.
Open choice. They got four kids from, they don't, so what do they need certificate of residency for? When they can just get on the bus and go there?
That's not the issue. That's not, that's not.
No, no, but I'm saying that's why they don't have them. If a kid wants to go to school from Hartford to Simsbury, yeah, just get on the bus, open choice and just go.
Yeah, well, all right, but.
There are four buses.
The, the point is that somebody would want, I, I don't think this is as common as you're making this out to be.
No, no. Check the, like, check East Hartford. Check Bloomfield, check those towns.
I think it's common.
You checking the wrong town.
It's common in West Hartford. It's common in, in, in Bloomfield. But I doubt if, if you go out.
Again, when you go out, they have school choice, like Glastonbury. Again, they got buses of kids from Hartford. I know them because I compete against them.
Okay.
And they are on a bus going to school there.
Right. Well, they're probably not gonna make the commute over the mountain. Let's say maybe that's more, but you know, someone could go from another town nearby. It's a, but.
But again, like I just told you, I literally was just talking to someone at Simsbury while they were waiting. There are four buses of kids that go.
Okay, but that's legal.
Yeah, it's legal. But no, what I'm telling you is, so.
That's not, that's not.
I don't have to go live with my cousin there to go to school because I could just go there.
Well, you're suggesting that somehow that if they didn't have a school choice, that they would, that, that.
They would, they might move in with their cousin there. Yep. They might. Because if they felt, I want my cousin to go to a better school, I'm gonna allow them, and the law allows for that, to come live with them and go there.
Well.
It does.
Yeah. Okay, so, so all the offenders are, 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 are school choice. I, I mean, that, is that it?
No. What I just told you is most of them here are living with their grandparents. But I'm, you using Simsbury, that's like comparing, I don't know, a, apples to grapes. Not even oranges. Because those kids are, they got, they got, they got a bunch of kids. And I'm talking just to high school. I don't even know what's in their middle or elementary schools.
Sure, sure. I, I mean.
I also think in districts, so certain districts pay for residency officers because certain districts are just, have a, a bigger propensity to have students trying to come. So I, Windsor being, we, we're very easy. We're right off the highway. Simsbury, you can't get to Simsbury easy at any time of the day. Like you have to be going over many, many towns to get there. It's not easy. So.
That's the point.
You're off ninety-one, you're off eighty-five. Those are the towns that it's an easy access to get to. So that's one of the reasons why we invest in our residency officers.
West Hartford has an active program.
Yep.
Of investigation because it's easy to get there.
In Bloomfield, yeah.
And what I will tell you is this, convenience is what people look at. For instance, I caught, there was a woman. She worked on the Hill Road. She had, she lived in Coventry. Had two kids in the middle school. She lived in Coventry. She was going to school because it was easy for her to drive her kids. She told me, she said, I didn't trust them at home by themselves. And the kids was bad, so she shouldn't have trusted them at home. And really, I, I shouldn't even say this, but it brought me to attention. I was in the, in the office and one of the kids was being rude. I said, where you live? And I started investigating them. You ask the question, what brings them? Just him having a bad attitude. And so what happened? The mother was bringing them here from Coventry.
Well, I hope you kicked them out.
Yeah, they gone. They long gone. That was a couple of years ago. They back in Coventry.
Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much and we appreciate you. And we are very lucky to have you.
I'm free to go, sir.
I have a feeling it's not allowed, but I'd love to.
I'm free to go, sir. Boss. Outstanding. Hey, y'all have a great day.
You too.
Listen, when you walking, when that black SUV pull up next to you, it's me. I'm taking you.
The black SUV. Ran right along.
Dr. Hill, I'm, Dr. Hill, I'm assuming that's the end of your section here with that residency report. Uh, committee reports? Are there any committee reports? Looking and seeing none. The next is item on the agenda, other matters, announcements, regular board meetings. Next Board of Ed, regular meeting is Tuesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven PM, right here in LPW boardroom. Uh, other announcements, uh, starting with Mr. King, any announcements? Mr. Madison, any announcements? Mr. Wallaston?
Oh, yes. Um, very quickly, um, tomorrow's a very important day, isn't it? We have a birthday tomorrow. Just want to say happy early birthday, um, to my lovely fiancee out here in the. Big day tomorrow. Happy birthday. That's all.
Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. I just want to wish everybody a happy spring at twenty-three hundred hours tonight.
It's coming. It's good. Well, hopefully we'll be out of here. Mr. Lockhart. Mr. Hellick?
I'm happy spring to everybody and a happy, uh, Board of, Board Appreciation Month. I'll tell all my fellow board members, it's an honor serving with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
Happy Board of Ed Appreciation Month. Happy birthday, Dr. Ramble. It's my best friend's birthday. Happy birthday, Sarah, tomorrow too. Thank you.
Mr. Panos?
Uh, nothing to add. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes.
Just want to make a note that before we leave, if we were to go into executive session, we need a picture for Board Appreciation Month. Uh, Ms. Gill's gonna take that picture. So before everybody takes off to the next room.
Next item, it's audience to visitor, Ms. Daly.
Evening. This is Robin Daly from the superintendent's office. If anyone from the public would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address, and comment into the Q and A feature in the Zoom application. Or you may speak by clicking raise hand or by dialing star nine within the Zoom app. When you are called on to speak, you will be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own. No comments will be made by the board at this time.
Okay, as indicated in the first audience to visitor, um, at the two and a half minute mark, anybody in the room here, Ms. Taylor will raise a card, hold it briefly, and then at the three minute mark, she'll hold it up and keep it up and ask you to please wind down your remarks. Uh, for anybody, uh, online, if you can't see the card, Ms. Taylor will interrupt you at the three minute mark to let you know, please wrap up your remarks. Anybody in the boardroom who'd like to address the board? Seeing and hearing none. Anybody online?
There are no attendees.
Without objection, I'll close audience to visitor. The next item, looking for a motion.
I move the Board of Education entered, uh, into executive session for the purpose of presenting the legal opinion for the transportation contract. The board invites Superintendent Hill, Director of Business Services and Human Resources, uh, Danielle Batchelder, and Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services, Dr. Nora Abdel-Hady, to be a part of this discussion.
Is there a second?
A second's a moment.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Motion carries nine zero zero at eight forty-seven and into executive session.
We're back in regular session at 9:34. Let's see what we have next. Is there a motion?
A move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I think I'll second that.
Any discussion?
No, he can't leave.
He wants to... I know you have some comments now on the left. James, do you have any comments on the last motion? Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, there's a motion to adjourn made by Ms. Taylor, segmented by Mr. Panos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Motion carries 9-0.